It's nine o'clock. We'll call the Tuesday, March 27, 2018 County Board of Commissioners meeting to order. Roll call will show that all commissioners are present. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the Public Access Forum. Is there anyone here to speak for the Public Access Forum for items that are not on today's agenda? Anyone for Public Access? See no one for Public Access, we'll move to the Consent Agenda. Board, what are your wishes there?
We'll move to approve the Consent Agenda with the item in our blue packet, which is the appointment of the Finance Director.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Mr. Notch?
Yeah, I was just gonna, you know, talking about the additional item in the blue packet, is that just to get the offer settled?
I can answer.
Either one of us can.
Anytime it's above the midpoint, the board has to approve it. So, it just came late, that it didn't make it onto the regular consent agenda, so that way it's an additional handle.
The commissioner, yes, the candidate has accepted that offer as of Friday's, but it needs final approval by you.
Okay, but accepted with the step up?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing nothing, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are already up to item C, Human Services. We have Melissa Huberty here.
Good morning.
Morning.
My name is Melissa Huberty. I'm the Human Services Administrator, and I have only two consent items that are C1 and C2 in pages 99 through 103. If you have any questions, please let me know.
I'll move to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
That is it?
Yes.
Thank you, Melissa.
Okay.
We're up to item D. We have Jody Take here from Public Works. Good morning.
My first item today is a resolution that I'm asking the board to adopt to support the South Gap along Trunk Highway 23 from New London to Painesville, to support that for corridors of commerce funding. The Candy Ojai County Board did adopt a resolution of support for the North Gap from Painesville to Richmond, and we received that after they adopted it on March 15th. This is probably mostly symbolic in the whole corridors of commerce application process, but the resolution is found in pages 105 and 106 of your agenda packets, and I'm just asking the board to adopt that.
I'll move adoption of resolution.
Been moved, is there a second?
Second.
Go ahead, Joe. Second, moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
My next item, I'm asking the board to approve implementation of a special farm products permit. I would want this permit to be added to the fee schedule effective April 15, 2018. We've been getting a lot of requests for this permit that is allowed by statute. Basically, the gross vehicle, it's an annual permit that allows a gross vehicle weight up to 90,000 pounds on six or more axles, or up to 97,000 pounds on seven or more axles. Minnesota statutes set these fees at $300 and $500 respectively. Surrounding counties have been implementing this, so we have been getting a lot of requests over the last few years since the legislature did implement this permit. Because statute sets the permit fees, we do not need to have a public hearing on setting these, we can simply add them to the fee schedule. So, I'm asking the board to approve implementation of this permit.
Any questions to Jody?
So moved.
I'll second and a question. Jody, at the present time, can they, can they use this, those weights and on the roads right now without the permit?
They would need to get overweight permits for every single time they haul. This is something that's allowed by statute. This is also encouraging them to do the additional axles, so they can maintain those axle weights, they can just carry an overweight amount and then pay that fee. Honestly, I think there is possibly some hauling of these weights without permits, and we have had Pilgrim's Pride and a few other area farmers who haul product off of their field in semis. We've had requests for this. Like I said, after that construction materials permit came out, more and more counties implemented both the construction materials permit and the special egg products permit. It makes it easier for haulers if all the counties in one area have implemented the same permit.
Is this what came through last year's legislation?
This was a few years ago. Last year was the construction materials one, and then the board did adopt that earlier in December for, to take effect on January 1st. So, this one would take effect on April 15th.
Okay. Anyone else?
But I, I think maybe you're alluding to, does it apply a weight restriction type?
Yeah.
They still have the gross axle weight restrictions, and the load postings on bridges have to be followed as well. So, they, they still have to follow those things, but it's just that their overall gross weight can be higher than what is the normally allowed by law.
Right, but they don't have any exemption during road restriction?
Correct.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else? None. It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
I do have two miscellaneous items. At the March 13 board meeting, the board approved setting a date for lowering two culverts in the North Fork Crow River watershed district along County Ditch 7, and it was along two county roads. The bid date was previously set to April 12th. I'm asking the board to extend that to April 19th due to some issues in getting that add out, so if we can set that date for April 19th.
Move approval of the recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
And my second item is I would like the board to approve setting a bid date for SP 073-070-016 and 017, and these are ground-in wet reflective edge lines that are paid 90% with Highway Safety Improvement Program funding. We just found out yesterday we could set the bid date. I'd like that bid date set for April 26th, and that's what I'm asking the board to approve.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries.
That's all I have unless the board has anything for me.
Thank you, Jody.
Thank you.
We are up to item E, the Auditor Treasure. Randy Schreifels here, and Dave Walz, Roxanne Garrett.
With me today, as mentioned, is Dave and Roxanne, and there'll be a number of changes in the elections this summer.
Are you talking about the results?
Hopefully not the results. With new equipment and absentee balloting locations, so with that, I thought you'll hear some questions, and it would be helpful for you to understand what's going on. So, with that, I thought Dave and Roxanne could go over that, so.
Morning, commissioners.
Morning. As Randy said, we're here to update you on a few of our election plans. The first
is the acquisition, training, and deployment of some of the new election equipment that you, we had a grant that you approved earlier this year. We got the grant, we're ready to start making that purchase. We're finalizing the contracts hopefully this week. One of the cornerstones of our equipment purchases is the replacement of the precinct counters that we used out in the precincts where you feed your ballot into the, into the counter. The DS 200 is the one we're going to purchase, provides a larger screen and very clear messages to the voters. The old one was 12, 14 years old and just had a narrow slot to tell a voter if he made a mistake, what the, what the error was, we always needed to judge. This is very self-explanatory and very, very clear. If you want to go to the next one, that screen is very illustrative. What the voter will see, it tells them how to insert the ballot. We had always some confusion about, from voters trying to put the ballot into a different slot or the wrong, the wrong place. And this will tell them, and if it doesn't go in right, it'll tell them what the problem is. So, it's a real self-serve, large visual screen that they can look at. The new equipment is also going to benefit the voters in a number of other ways. There's going to be fewer paper jams. We used, that was a common problem in the old one, we had to pull it out, try it again, turn it upside down, try to get it to run through. It provides clear messages to the voters, as I said, and it's also easy to assemble for the election judges. We're going to have way fewer equipment failures. The other equipment that we had, we had five machines fail on Election Day in the general election two years ago. That's not a good trend. We're hoping that we won't have any with this new equipment. It's even more accurate ballot reading because these are digital scanners as opposed to the other ones. They're all certified under the Election Assistance Commission guidelines by the federal government, so they've had rigorous testing and should serve us well for a number of years. It's a big upgrade for us. Let's see, let's go to the next one. Another piece of equipment that we're going to buy, and this is going to be for internal use here at the county, it's called the DS 450, and it's a central count machine. So, we're getting more and more absentee ballots returned to us, and more and more mail ballot precincts. As, as that trend continues, we need a faster way to scan those ballots. And in the last election in 2016, in the general, we had about 13,000 of those ballots to process, and under the old system, we fed them through, I did a lot of them, one at a time, all 13,000. Randy helped me the night before the election. We were scrambling, it was 10 o'clock. We weren't completely convinced we were going to have all the ballots read by 8 o'clock on, on election, which is our goal, to be able to produce results. These are stackable, I think they'd read about 60 ballots a minute. All the programming for all the precincts goes into the machine, we can stack them up, walk away, just like a copy machine, it reads them again, high speed and very accurate. It keeps digital images of the ballots if we need to review a question, and the machines actually tell us how the ballot was read. So, if there's a question about a particular race, if a voter put a mark in one oval and then a mark in another oval, we're not sure which way the machine read it, the machine will tell us which way it interpreted it. We can change that as judges, we have the ability to override that. If there's any question on any races, it gives us the ability to really drill down and electronically change that. So, again, another big, big advantage for us.
Excuse me, Dave, do we have more precincts going to mail-in ballot, or where are we with the numbers on mail-in?
We had 15 in the last election, we're up to 18, and tonight I'm going to St. Anthony, and I, they asked me to come, so I have reason to believe that they will want to go, and that will put us at 19. We have 99 precincts, so, well, 20%, no, that's not 20% of the votes, most of these are smaller.
Right, right.
But yeah, it's, we're still trending up.
Yeah, okay.
All right, the next piece of equipment, new equipment we have this year is the old poll, the e-poll book. And with the exception of a couple pilot projects we did, this will be our first election. We've got about 60 precincts that will be using these electronic poll books. What that is, it really replaces the paper roster. So, when a voter comes in to vote, they'll check in on this, looks like an iPad, basically is what it is. So, they'll check in on this iPad, they'll get a voter receipt, and, and it really combines in the polling place the registration judge and the roster judge. So, like their model is one line anytime. So, the same judge can check in a voter and also register a new voter. Couple of the pilot projects we did, in November in 2017, we did a special election for the school district 750. We had three polling places that consisted of Richmond, City Richmond, City of Rockville, and the City of Coal Spring. We had 11 precincts in those three polling places. The other pilot project we did was just this last March township election, and we had four precincts that participated in that, and that was Albany, Avon, St. Joe, and Wakefield. Some of the testimonials and benefits that we heard from those pilot projects, from the judges and, and also some voters, is everyone loved them, it was nice to have. More importantly, though, it does improve the privacy for voters, because when you're pulling up, when you're registering the voter, they're just seeing their register where in the paper roster, they can, they would see the whole page of other voters' names and addresses and so forth. It does also improve the, the wait lines. It's much quicker to check in a voter, so we have seen some improvement in the lines. The judges felt that was easy to assemble, so there is, so far, everyone that has used them has, has really liked them.
I don't think we've had any negative comments from anyone.
I've been waiting to hear from you, Lee.
Can you wait until you use one before?
Okay.
And the last thing that we want to talk about is, just to bring you up to date on our training initiatives. We have all this new equipment, and obviously people need to be thoroughly trained on how to use it and what to expect. So, in a typical year, every two years, we have to, we go through a training process for all of our election judges, and we end up training, our relatively small staff ends up training over 800 election judges and, and city and township clerks for this process. I think we got 100 precincts and about eight per precinct, eight judges a precinct, you're going to get 800 plus clerks, plus we do school district clerks and so on. So, it's, it's a big production for us to do. It takes a lot of us out of the office for, for a lot of time. We're going to, this year, because some precincts are going to have e-poll books and some now, we're going to have to split up our training sessions into, into two rivers, two paths for those precincts that don't have the electronic poll books yet and those that have opted in to do so. So, that's one more challenge for us. We also train a few judges from neighboring counties. I'm bragging, but our training's pretty good, and we do get requests from neighboring counties for people, even auditors, to attend our, our training sessions and their staffs so that they can learn how we do things here. So, I'm tooting the horn. Just to give you an idea.
Dave, are you looking for judges yet? Do you have enough, or is that, is it always a problem finding them?
Well, I think it's always a problem, Commissioner. The, the key here is that we don't hire the judges, the municipalities do. So, I'm assuming that the municipalities are all, probably some of the smaller rural ones have a pretty set stable, but I'm sure many of the larger municipalities are turning over judges the same way the counties turning over, you know, older employees.
Okay.
I'm sure they're, they're interested in looking at. And also, I think as we add these technology pieces, we may have some turnover from that, too. I haven't heard of any, but I think we're always looking for good judges.
But you haven't heard of any real problems finding them or anything like that?
We met with Sadia St. Claude yesterday, and I don't know that they have a problem, but I think they could use more.
Thank you.
Some of the categories of trainings that we do, we do clerk trainings, three sessions of that, judge trainings, 15 sessions, that we try to limit ourselves to about 50 people in a session. I can, we can control the room and answer questions for everybody, and we don't get a group talking over here. We've tried larger sessions, but sometimes they become unruly. And so, and then we do head judge training, we're going to incorporate some equipment training with those, there's nine sessions of that. We do a healthcare training, which is for people who go to healthcare facilities to help them absentee ballots. So, that would be what we would use to call nursing homes. There's a larger category of, of that where we help with that, and that requires a special certification, and we do all that. The VA would be another large one. And then Roxanne will be heading up the old e-poll book training sessions. We've had a couple, by doing these pilots, we've already trained those people, so we don't have as, it's twofold. We get to test the equipment and the reaction of, of both the public and the judges, and it also helps us whittle down a number of the precincts that need to be trained by doing that. us whittle down a number of the precincts that need to be trained by doing that. So we start this on June fourteenth and it runs up to August eighth, two, two a day. We try not, not to do three a days anymore and some nights to accommodate everybody. And then we'll also have equipment labs set up here for those people who go through the equipment training and aren't completely comfortable with it. Some of our other staff from land records and finance are helping us becoming experts on how to use some of this equipment also. So we can't, as we get closer to the election, the core election staff can't always be available at a moment's notice to go help whoever shows up to want a lab practice session. So we're using some of the other auditor staff, which we greatly appreciate, to help us train, set up these labs and staff the labs accordingly. So if they aren't completely, we want everybody to be completely comfortable with the equipment well before election day. We are adding an absentee ballot location this year. For those of you who saw the lines here in the boardroom as we tried to vote two years ago, we felt the need to add another location. So we are going to use the West Service Center as another absentee ballot location to serve the citizens of the western part of the county more. We also have one in Melrose and, and thanks to Melrose City for hosting that location. In order to staff all these things, we're going to have to use more temporary staff. And in my budget this year, I included a fairly large number for us to be able to use more temporary staff. And the temporary staff, we would take trained election judges from the local cities. And they're already certified as judges. They're used to dealing with the public in this same regard. And then we would use them to staff some of these locations. We think we're going to need a pool of about thirty or more temps to do that, to help us with that. And then we had a question about this earlier, but we will have eighteen mail ballot precincts this year. And I'm going to St. Anthony tonight, so we'll see what happens there. Anything else I missed, Roxanne?
I think that pretty much covers everything.
Anyone have any questions? Mr. Merrick?
I have some questions. The, the counters that you had had a screen up on top, that screen doesn't have any indication about who voted for who. It's, it's just, just instructions as to how to feed the equipment?
The mechanics of getting the ballot into the
It, it will say it if you overvote in a race. So instance, if it was a vote for one and you voted for two people, or in a primary, if you crossed over and voted for two primary, it'll give you instructions like that, but it doesn't tell you who you voted for.
Okay. And I, and I think this is self-explanatory, but when you said earlier that somebody could mark, mark two of the ovals, is there some instruction that, that goes, you know, when the, when the voter registers to make sure that you mark only one oval? And if you make a mistake, you can turn it back in and get a new ballot? Is there that type of instruction?
Yeah, it's a good, a good point. The ballot judge, the person who hands it out should be giving instructions to every voter on how to, you know, fill in the oval, don't make an arrow or don't make a circle around the name. So instructions on how to fill a ballot, both sides of the ballot and, and those types of things, yes.
Okay. And the counting equipment, what type of a verification is there that, that numbers match? I mean, you can talk about that a little bit. So you feed it into the machine and the machine says this is the number. Do you have any way to verify that?
At the end of the, at the end of the day, we'll take the total, number of ballots as reported by the machine. It will run a totals tape.
Okay.
And then we'll compare that to the number of voters that registered. And those numbers ought to match.
Okay. On the e-poll book, I assume that the judges are right there to help people with, because there's some people that are, when, when they look at an iPad, they're going to be scared away. So there's somebody right there to help them?
Yes.
It's not a self-serve registration system. There's still a judge there.
And I also had a question on the election judges. You answered some of that earlier. If we have, if we have enough election judges, what are the requirements for an individual to be an election judge? And is there, it's a two-part kind of a question, comment, to let folks know through the county website, through local websites, that, that there's a need for election judges and these are the requirements? What, what are those requirements? Can you tell us?
Eligible to vote, I believe.
Yep.
Okay. So anybody that's eighteen and older?
And there's also provision for a student, a trainee program for high school students.
Okay. And on absentee voting, what are the requirements? There used to be, it used to be just a very limited number. And as you said, there's a, there's a lot of people that vote absentee, and that's a growing number. Are there any limitations to who can vote absentee?
No, so it's, it's no fault. Now, it used to be in the past, you had to fill out the form and say why you're doing that, but now it's no fault. So right, if, if you're, you know, a citizen and if you have your residence in that precinct, you can absentee vote.
Yep. Seems like a pretty good system. Back in my time as a clerk of St. Cloud Township, we went through, through a very rigorous problem or through a very rigorous process. And we had equipment that was
Yeah. But we're, we're kind of, you know, progressing towards early voting, which is basically what we have, but we still have all the paperwork to do. So, you know, we're hoping the legislature will simplify that because other states, early voting, you don't have to quite fill out the number of forms and do the paperwork that we
What is the difference between early voting and absentee voting?
Fill out the form and the registration and then we have to track that ballot. Where early voting, you'd come in, sign the roster and then put your ballot right in the machine. So we have a number of other steps that we have to do.
It's just basically election day extended over a longer period of time.
Good.
Thank you.
Yeah, what else? Any questions?
Just one more question.
Commissioner.
Say, Dave, do we always have hard copy on, on the ballots?
Yes. Minnesota, I believe, always will. Many states that went away from that are coming back to it. So we always have an audit. And our audits, we do have audits. We have recounts continually in these races and they always prove the accuracy of the equipment. There's pretty rigorous post. We're required to do post-election testing anyway on random precincts. Our county, our size, has to recount three precincts at random, whether they need it or not. And then we generally have, last time we had Senator Ralph's race was recounted, was it thirteen?
Yeah, was there another city or school?
And, and we always have cities and schools that typically need some recounting. And they always, there's very little variance. And I think this new equipment will be even better.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Commissioner Landsby.
You cited various types of equipment. Obviously, you know, you're not going to buy the same amount of each one. So could you explain quantities of those types of equipment? It sounds to me like one of them, you only need one. Another one of them, you need ninety-nine.
Right. The central count machine will only need one.
Yep.
Hopefully it doesn't, we're, we're confident that it won't break down or anything like that. And then of the DS two hundred, the precinct counter, we're going to get about seventy
Seventy-five?
Seventy-five of those, a few spares. And then, you know, we have ninety-nine precincts, but because of mail balloting and other combinations, we don't need quite as many as, as we did when we made the purchase some years ago, the original purchase. And then for poll books, we're looking at about a hundred and sixty.
About a hundred and sixty, yep.
And that will allow us to have some spares. So some precincts will use more than one, especially in St. Cloud. They may have multiples for one precinct. And they link together and sync so that no one can go from one line to another line.
Oh, come on.
They're pretty high-tech. They're pretty nice.
The, would there be a rule for, say, maybe some sort of an electronic medium for training? You know, something that someone went through the training or despite her best efforts missed the training, so they could catch up at home?
And, and we do have that. We have an online election judge training program.
Right.
We had about eighty or so people use it last time. Our requirement on, on it is that you have to have, be an experienced judge to do it. You've had, had to work in person for two elections prior to this, before you do it. Now, this year, since we're changing so many things and especially with, with this equipment, we're kind of making every, this round this year, we're, we want everybody that, who's using the new equipment to come back in so we can see them face to face. And they can not see a video about it, but actually handle the equipment hands-on. So we think this year, we're going to take a step back on that. But going forward again, then we'll, once we've got one election under our belts, we'll expand that again. That, that is the wave of the future for us. So we aren't, the training will consume us. And we need to move away from that going in the, in the future.
The, I know the absentee ballot phenomenon is something that we anticipate correctly, in my opinion, continue to grow. I'd like to see the trend line though. How difficult would it be for you to go back a couple of election cycles and see what rate that phenomenon is increasing?
Well, Commissioner, I can give you rough numbers on that right now. We typically had, the first ten years I worked here in a general election, we typically had about five thousand absentee voters. Last time, we had thirteen thousand, which is about fifteen percent of our total. And we expect that number to go well into the twenties, I think.
Right. I think a number of the metro counties are already into the twenties and
High twenties.
Yeah. So it, it's going to grow. Certainly in two years, this one, it'll grow some. But the next presidential, we'll see some big numbers.
So if, just round numbers, if we have roughly eighty thousand voters and if we have twenty-five percent, you know, that'll put us at the twenty thousand mark. And all those are handled internally here. So I mean, it's a
Commissioner Merrick, you have a question?
Right. If I remember right, Stearns County received grant money. I think you said that earlier. What is the total cost of the equipment and grant money paid for a certain amount and the county took care of the rest?
About eight hundred thousand?
Yeah, we're gonna, we're gonna approach eight, nine hundred thousand on the equipment purchase. And the grant was a hundred and seventy
Yeah, something like that.
Hundred and seventy-eight thousand.
Okay, so it's close to a million dollars for the, for the upgrade. And how much grant money do we get?
So the, the total was around, I think, eight fifty or so. That was the total. And then the grant paid for about a hundred and seventy thousand.
Hundred and seventy, okay. Okay, thank you. Anyone else?
Just as, just as a reminder, filing opens May twenty-two. Not that anyone cares.
The, I would anticipate, I bet you can draw a correl, yeah, there you go. I, I suspect you can draw a correlation between the aging population and the popularity of absentee ballot. I mean, I haven't sat here, you know, during absentee voting periods, but if I had, I would suspect I'd be an older group.
You are correct, sir.
Oh, yeah. You know, yeah, the seniors I talked to, it's a, it's remarkable how popular that is.
It's amazing, you know, the line is out the door, down to the auditor's office and started circling back. On election day, there was no waiting in line. And this was like the day before or the Saturday before. It's like, I don't, I don't get it, but.
I was in here the weekend before. It was, it was remarkable.
Yeah.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
We are up to E-two, which is the surveyor's office.
Yep.
Service update. And we have Scott Marlin here along with Randy Schreifels.
Scott's been doing some work with the external surveyors. He's met with them and trying to understand their needs. And with that, he has a new application that he'd like to talk about.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I have a new, we have a new land survey application that I want to talk to you a little bit about. We're not going to demo, actually demo, the application this morning because I know you've seen applications that are similar to this, that, that the county is utilizing. But more so, what I want to talk to you about is our land survey application and how it comes out of outreach that we're doing with our customers, with professionals, professional land surveyors in our area, and how this really directly relates to our mission and our values as, as the board has defined and really, really is trying to move forward for the, for the entire county. So in late 2016, my office started having outreach listening sessions with local land surveyors. We scheduled, we scheduled meetings here at the county building. We also went to Minnesota's Society Professional Surveyors Chapter meetings to get input on how are we doing? What services do you like how we're providing them? What services are we not providing that you need? Are there ways that we could improve? Are there ways that we could do things better? And they were very open to this. And, and while they, they liked how we're providing services, they, some of the things that they brought to our attention is the timeliness of services and speed. And we're always asked to do more with less. We have a more compressed timeframe for what we're doing. And so that's one of the things that they really wanted. So we took a look at the different bits and details. And what we're able to do, we worked with our GIS team, and we were able to leverage some of our existing online GIS applications and tie our imaging processes that we've been using in the surveyor's office to help land surveyors better visualize the land for clients and for the delivery of the surveyor's office records to these clients. So part of this really comes out of that outreach. And we've had really, I guess people really like it. We've had really great comments on this. We launched it late in 2017, very late in 2017. And we have forty-one, I checked this morning, we have forty-one different land surveying companies utilizing this service in a short, very short time. So that's really, really, really good for us. So, so one of the things that I talked about, we leveraged existing GIS internet mapping to meet our customers' needs. And the way we, the way we promote this and market this to land surveyors is, we, the application provides mapping, obviously. And we have, we have better organized the information for how land surveyors see it. So mapping is one of the things that they take a look at. And we hope that they're able to use this as they would see, say, a preliminary plot. Searching capabilities, land surveyor search on section township range basis. And that's how we have set this up. We've added that section township range search for them. And research. Research is one of the big things for land surveyors that takes a fair amount of time. And time, that increased cost. And those costs are transferred on to the landowners, our taxpayers. Our customers are the same customers. So by us providing better customer service and more timely customer service to the professional service providers, our taxpayers are getting better services in turn. So it's a very important, it's a very important application for us. So this is how the application looks. You've seen this. This looks like our land use application. So we leveraged an existing expenditure that we had. We spent the dollars already. We bought just a small amount of additional programming time, added on to that, and we were able to reuse and integrate and show the same forward-facing application that others are able to use. So when we go back to this, one of the problems with providing customer service to these professional service providers is twenty-four-seven service. They, they're working at all different times of the day. So this right here is a problem, is, is the problem. And, I mean, I have a slide up there that says we're open, open twenty-four-seven. And we're not really open twenty-four-seven for all of our services, but that's what the internet provides for us. That's what technology provides for us. And why is that important? We receive, we receive requests for information that we were manually providing through email at, it might be at five o'clock on a Friday. So five o'clock on a Friday, they don't get service until eight fifteen, eight-thirty on Monday. How many hours is that? We get requests for information on Saturdays, on Sundays. We get requests for information at six o'clock in the morning on Monday. Even if it's six o'clock or seven o'clock, they still don't get service for an hour or two hours. And they're trying to get their day started. So speed and efficiency is very important for providing our services. Utilizing our GIS and our imaging system and the internet, we're able to provide those services on a twenty-four-seven basis for many of the things that we're getting requests for. So I guess we've talked a little bit about that we're getting requests for. So, I guess we've talked a little bit about reducing request times. One of the things that we did, as we were moving forward with this application, is we started logging, because we knew we would need some metrics to determine, how are we doing? So we started logging specific requests. So we, say, we logged every request we had for a section breakdown. Section breakdown's an eight and a half by eleven sheet of paper, essentially. It's an image. But it takes us about fifteen minutes to do that every time we get a request. We logged them for a year. There's about two-hundred-and-fifty requests. You multiply that out, and we're looking at about five weeks of labor to do that one simple request. We launched this application, and we rarely get a phone call for that particular request. By spending a very small amount, leveraging existing technology, we have been able to maximize our labor, because now we're moved, we've moved on to doing other things. Our customers are getting information when they need it. They're getting information in minutes, or from the field, on their phone, on their iPad. They're getting that information immediately, and when they need it. And, you know, it's, it has really helped relieve a lot of those frustrations. So, you know, and this, and this just talks about the same thing that, that I just told you verbally, but, you know, it's important. My office has a hundred and fifty years of land surveying information on the public land survey system. It's, it takes a long time to sift through a hundred and fifty years of information. We are currently scanning more and more documents. We'll be adding those in. And we talk about doing research, and being able to do research quickly, doing research in minutes, rather than taking days or weeks. It's, it's a pretty big deal, and we're, we're super excited.
Scott, are you ready to finish it up?
Yep, we can do that. So, you know, I, I do have to thank my, thank my team, because I, I just get to present, you know, the culmination of their work, and, and so that's great. But when you talk about our mission and values, you know, we want to be reliable. We want, we want to strive for continuous improvements. We're eager to serve, and, you know, we do have a keen awareness to our customers' needs. So, and we're using teamwork with our customers to deliver applications and, and meet their needs. If you have, if you want to see more about the application, you can give me a call, stop by, and we'll show you around. Thank you.
Mr. Merrick, question?
Is there a cost to access this information by these private companies?
There, there is not a cost. That was, that's one of the, one of the things that we looked at with this application. These are services that we did not charge for, to begin with. So there, there is a, this is designed just for surveyors, so you have to be a surveyor to get into the application. And we do require them to provide us information, and also then, of course, then they have access to all our information electronically. So, we are, it does help us to get some information. That benefits everybody, and also, as Scott mentioned, you know, it's, it's a big time saver for our staff, too, so.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Landsby?
How far are you into the scanning of your hundred-and-fifty-year manual database?
We, you know, I would estimate that we are about, about sixty percent through our records right now.
Sixty?
Yes, sir. So we have, we've contracted to have a company scan a number of our records, and we're gonna continue to do that. We have an impending move to another building location, and we have looked at our space requirements, and we have set goals to accomplish scanning and indexing of those records. We would like to get as much done as possible prior to our move. So it's, it's really timely for us to, and motivating to get that accomplished.
How was the task designed for digitizing that data? What the hell is he talking about? Well, did you start with the stuff that was generated in 2018, or did you start with the stuff that was generated in eighteen eighteen?
Right. When, when we look at these, when we look at our record sets, our modern information is electronic anyway. So, everything that we're doing right now, it's, it's already in that format. So when we finalize information, we scan it, index it into the system as we go. So our modern records are really pretty good. In prioritizing the other information that goes into the system, there have been some record sets that we have scanned on our own over the year to make access easier and service times quicker for us. So, we were able to really leverage that and get a head start on some of the things that we're currently able to do right now. So we got that information into the system first. Then we started, we did an inventory of all of our records, and we started prioritizing as to what information is being asked for the most. So, and then we just systematically move through our information, recreating the old indexes, and that's how we retrieve our records. Does that make sense?
Sort of.
Okay.
You know, the point being is that I would think that as you go back in time, say even fifty years ago, there are fewer documents to deal with. In addition, the stuff that was done, say, in the last twenty-five years, may, even if it is in electronic format, it may not currently be readable, because technology is advanced. So, I'm just curious how you handle it.
Yes. So, we, what we are finding with this information is that even though records are scattered, and we had less information at, back in the day than we do today, what we're finding is, we connect these records, we are able to connect oftentimes a township road order to the original county surveyor's survey of that road, and the original county surveyor's notes. We didn't intend to do that to begin with, but we're finding that many times we're able to do that. So, by crossing, you know, going through the walls, and breaking down those walls, and putting it together with technology, we're able to make connections that we were never able to make before. And to your point of, while there used to be less information than there is today, or that, you know, there's, there was a time when electronic information wasn't great, what we're able to do is to pull those records together, and there's more information out there than we thought there was. And being able to bring that information out very quickly is, it's, it's, it's a phenomenal, it's a phenomenal task, and, but it's, it's working wonderfully.
Yeah, I would, I would guess, well, I have observed that certain professions back in the day might not have had access to computers, but that didn't mean they weren't still data geeks.
That's right.
Your profession would be an excellent example.
That's right.
Anyone else say questions? Thank you, Scott.
The last item is certainly not a time-critical item. We can do it another day. I, I see that we're behind on our time, so it's up to you, I guess.
I think we have, yeah.
Okay.
We don't have a whole lot of agenda left, so.
So with me today is Steve Holtz, property tax supervisor. He oversees the tax forfeiture process. And we've had a number of structures over the last year, so we thought it would be good to update. And you've probably heard from some people, 'cause it did involve a number of occupied structures. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Morning, Steve.
Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. All right, so like Randy just said, we wanted to provide an update as to where we were on the forfeiture process and, and what took place last year. So to begin, in 2017 in the spring, we started with ninety-one parcels facing forfeiture that included fifty-six structures. That's kind of the trend that we're seeing right now, is that we're seeing a lot more residential homes, where in the past, we've seen a lot of vacant lots, residential or commercial. With that, we got fifty of those parcels to be paid in full. Thirty-eight parcels went to a monthly ACH payment plan. We have, the other option by the state is, is three confessional judgments that offers, where the people are entered into a judgment, it's entered into courts, and they're set up on an annual payment versus a monthly payment. It was their choice, and that's kind of what they elected to do. So by the time we got done processing everything through the end of the year last year, in the fall, we ended up with thirty-two parcels that forfeited with eight structures on them. Five of these properties with residents potentially faced eviction at the time, okay? Three parcels of those five have been, you've seen a number of them come through on the consent agenda as repurchases, so we've got them staying in their home into a payment plan on a contract, or one of them, I think, even paid it off. But we're still working on two other repurchases yet, and we do have money down now from one of the repurchases, and we're still working on a different property, but we think that one will come through. So we ended up with zero evictions, which is time-consuming, because we have attorney time, and, and we work a lot with these people to keep them into their properties. It's our goal to keep them in there, however, still collect the taxes at the end of the day.
When you're talking structures, are those always houses?
I think in these eight structures, we had two commercial buildings and the rest were residential. So our staff, staffing effort, we go through a lot of great lengths to work with the residents, to try and keep them in their property, provide them solutions as to how, how can we come up with money down. We're talking with financial institutions regarding it, either, and some other programs, whether it be Catholic charities, Lutheran services, or anything that might be able to assist them. And one of the things that Randy may want to touch on is, is what Hennepin County is doing.
So Hennepin County, they, they deal with a lot of people with, you know, in their homes and facing eviction, and they have a program where they work with Human Services on that. And we're starting to do that more, and this last property is a property where we're, we're talking to Human Services, and these people are, I think, are in need of some help that's out there, but they're not reaching out to get that. So, we're trying to find, you know, a less threatening way for them to get the help they need. And sometimes that takes some coercing by us, or some, some pushing, and so we're working on that with Human Services. Certainly, you know, there's some private information that Human Services needs to deal with them that, that we don't. So that's emphasis that we'll see going forward, and this last property, we are working with them on that. So, that'll probably be a trend going forward in the future. And so far, Human Services have been very good to work with on this, so.
So we're trying to be proactive. So, for example, our current list that we're gonna forfeit on this year, we've already sent, trying to reach out to the cities as well, since they know their properties better than we do, and to figure out if they're vacant, if somebody's living them in there, are they paying their utilities? Can we find some resources to help them? And this is one way that we can provide that anyway, too.
So the statute's changed a couple of years ago. Steve was on a committee made up of the auditors that looked at forfeitures. And one of the things was, is we know there's structures and properties out there that are abandoned, the people have just left. In the past, we could not do anything until it actually forfeited after three years of non-payment and the whole process. Now we're able to go early, if we see a property that's been abandoned, and go in there and start the forfeiture process early. Couple extra steps, but it certainly helps our timeline, 'cause especially a structure, if it sits there abandoned, it, it deteriorates rather quickly. So, that's what we're trying to start doing now, is going even ahead of time, ahead of the ones that are forfeiting, and see what's out there. And that's where we're asking the cities and the townspeople to help us identify those.
Just to recap some of the current inventory, we had eight-point-five million in revenue, so our revenue streams are still good with our inventory. We have a hundred and nineteen parcels in the current inventory that's over the corner for sale. We just wanted to let you know, too, that there'll be a future presentation upcoming to the county board, meaning for the distribution of that revenue, and to review the fund and discuss a policy regarding repurchases and county administrative fees.
So, the repurchases, we're, we're happy to have those, but right now, the only fee is an extra hundred dollars to do that. So if they do that early on, you know, we don't have a lot of time and effort into that, but if we do it late in the process, we've already had maintenance out there, closing it down, making sure the pipes are fine, putting new locks on it. We've probably made a number of trips and worked with people. So we've put a lot of time and effort into this property. So somehow, we're gonna look at, is there a, a way of capturing some of those costs for the person, repurchasing it, and/or maybe set some timeline and tell them, you know, if you repurchase it by this date, you're not gonna have to pay these additional costs. Because right now, they're just seem to wait until the last day always, and we need to someplace move that forward, so. Plus, we don't want to have repurchases, you know, we advertise things on the auction, have them repurchased at the day before the auction, and then people come to the auction, expect it to be there, and it's not. So we'll probably say it needs to, you know, there's a timeline, so many days before the auction that the repurchase has to happen. So, we'll be working on some of those policies and bring that forward to you at a future meeting.
Just, our auction will be held at, on June twelfth, six-thirty at the West Side Service Center this year.
And Steve, how many properties will be on that?
I think there are around forty right now, because we did reappraise some, yeah.
Mr. Persky?
Yeah, I see there's a hundred and nineteen parcels in the inventory. How many of those are bare lots, buildable lots? Do you know?
I would say all of them, at this point, in the current inventory, yes.
Okay, that, so those are all buildable lots. I know a number of years ago, we had an auction, and, and we did quite well at selling those off and getting homes on there. And I would think, you know, that the market is perhaps right now as well. And there may be individuals that are looking to build. And I, just a little bit of advertising might help those go, and also might bring a little bit higher price, so.
Yep, and we are looking at advertising plan, yep.
Seems to be most of our purchasers are contractors and builders.
Yeah, exactly. But I know there's some entrepreneurs that want a home for themselves, too, that...
The other thing legislatively, we, we worked with that committee in the Department of Revenue. Right now, the state's interpretation is, before the state will give a deed, the property has to be paid in full. Well, that's not how normal real estate transactions work. You normally get a loan for that, right? So we're telling them, if they have financing arranged, then the state should issue a deed, and that's the legislation that we're seeking to get. So allows, you know, somebody that may not have the cash to purchase these properties, so.
Mr. Nudge?
Doesn't somebody issue get to be the assessments that are on those properties, too?
Yeah, certainly the hundred and nineteen, there, there are some in some of the communities that have the assessments, and they have bonds to pay, and they want to get those assessments. But on some of those, we lower them anyway, realizing that there still will be assessments coming back, but we kind of got them to as low as we can. So some of the forty are some reappraisals that you guys approved, but, right, that, that is a hindrance out there right now, too.
Anyone else? Mr. Persky?
Then do we have some of those packaged together? So you have a block of ten, or a block of five, or, or are they all individual?
I think we do have a couple of those.
There's a few blocks that were intended to be high-density areas, where they were to share walls, so it's kind of hard to sell those individually.
And then we do have one or two where we have a contractor that's looking to do something different, that we have an agreement with them, that they have to purchase by... a certain date. I think we give them 60 or 90 days, give some money down, and then if they get the rezoning done, then they get the property. So it's kind of a no-risk thing for them, and we help hold it off of sale for that 60 or 90 days to kind of give them time to do that. So we try to work with everybody we can to get these things sold.
Any other questions? Thank you, Randy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. We are going to take a five-minute break.[628.82]
But it looks like everyone's returned. We'll call it back to order.
We are up to item F, Environmental Services, Consent Items. What are your wishes?
I'll move the consent with a question.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
A second? Oh, second. I'll second it.
It's been moved and seconded.
I just had a question on the Black Walnut Grove. That one, it was turned down four to one. Any comment on whether one, no vote?
I'll tell you what, that one, we had actually had asked the folks with the request to come back with it. In the previous meeting, we'd spent an hour on it. We then spent another hour and a half on it this time. Okay, and I believe the one dissenting vote was perhaps they just didn't like the fact that we were just denying it completely. And that was it. But the, I will tell you what, I want to commend the board there because they all had gone out and made visits. And we put in a lot of dialogue and we ferreted out the details and I think it's a sound decision to make that denial, so.
Are they coming back again?
I have no idea. Yeah, because the changes were not in line with what I think the commission was looking at or even what staff would support as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else? Mr. Landswire?
I don't know if this is helpful or not, but one of the things that I think I have observed in my tenure is that when a decision of a planning commission or, you know, an appointed body is made, it turns out a four to one vote is stronger than a five to nothing vote. That defies gravity, but the reality is, is that it indicates to someone, considering challenging the decision, is that it was discussed and this is a matter on which maybe reasonable minds might differ. So I favor at least one person voting against something like that.
Are you going to vote no on the consent, though?
I don't know. We've never got challenged on a consent. We reconsidered once.
Well, that's kind of my question is, you have approved planning commission action, so you're saying it was denied by planning commission, so that's what you're asking the board to do?
Correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Consent agenda has been moved and seconded. See no further discussion. All in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Environmental Services, G, where item one, G, is one.
Mr. Chair, Shelley Benson, Environmental Services Director. I do have Angie Berg here to go through the next two items with you.
Good morning.
Morning.
The next two items are rezonings. That's why they're not on your consent agenda, because it would be possibly an ordinance enactment. The first one is submitted by Rock and Gail Ruland of Richmond, and the planning commission did unanimously recommend approval. The Rulands own approximately seven acres in the R5 zoning district. The request is to rezone it to R1. It is located north of State Highway 22 and south of Long Lake in Eden Lake Township. The planning commission, again, unanimously recommended approval, as did the Eden Lake Town Board. And the findings of fact were, that the planning commission made is that the proposal does conform to the Stearns County Comprehensive Plan. It is compatible with present and future land uses in the area. Environmental concerns will be addressed through the plating process. The proposal will have minimum impact on public health, safety, and traffic generation. The proposal will have no impact on existing public services and facilities. And the issue of the horses on the property will be resolved by the property owner on or before July 1st of 2018. So again, the recommendation of the planning commission is to rezone and enact ordinance number 572.
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of the recommendation.
Is there a second?
I'll second and comment.
Moved and seconded. Commissioner Persky.
Yeah, this was the first time I was down at this property on, by these lakes, and I was surprised with the density of the cabins and homeowners that are down there. And then seeing this, literally just how they were stacked in there, because I was not aware of that. And so with the uniqueness of this property and the horses being there, with the plating process, I would hope that it's done so that it's, you know, make sure that it's environmentally sound, so.
Any other comments? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Mr. Chair, do you want me to go ahead with the next one?
Yes.
The next item is also a rezoning submitted by Thomas Studer of St. Joseph. And this property is approximately 20 acres, currently located in the A40 zoning district, as shown on the overhead. The proposal is to rezone it to R10. And the property is located in Section 4, St. Wendell Township. The township did support the rezoning from A40 to R10. And the property owner, who is here today, his intent would be to subdivide the 20 acres into two 10-acre parcels and build a home. The planning commission unanimously recommended denial of the request for the following reasons. The property is located within the ag and limited growth area on the future land use map, and the proposal does not conform to the following goals and objectives of the comprehensive plan, which are sustaining ag as the desirable land use for the long term, minimizing land use conflict between agriculture and other land uses. The proposal is not compatible with the present and future land uses in the area. The surrounding properties are zone agricultural 40. And the land evaluation site assessment score is 83, which does exceed the recommended threshold for non-ag conversion. The proposal will have a minimal impact on public health, safety, and traffic generation. It will have no effect on existing public services. And finally, they noted the proposal would be considered spot zoning. The applicants could pursue purchasing a building entitlement from an adjacent landowner rather than rezoning. And Mr. Chair, I did talk with the property owner yesterday and explained his options related to building entitlements. We're going to meet with him after this, depending on the outcome of the board today.
What are your wishes?
It's your district.
I'll move the recommended action.
I'll second it. No comment.
Commissioner Persky?
Yeah, so, you know, I can understand Mr. Studer wanting to build on that property. I think all the people in the commission were very much sympathetic and empathetic about that situation as well. However, the policies that we have in place, the value of the land as far as being ag land, the zoning to R10, and consideration of the long-range plans by the township and the county, that's the, you know, the rationale. It's difficult for us to say no, but we know that we've got standards and policies that we want to adhere to. And the building entitlement credits are available around there, and I'm optimistic that, with your discussion after the meeting here, and that hopefully we may be able to resolve it in that way to also then, long-term, preserve some of that ag land in that area, so.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We have one more item?
Yes, we have the last item, which is a request for a public hearing. And Angie can go through that, too.
The proposed amendments that we're looking at to the land use and zoning ordinance number 439 relate to the shoreline discussion that we had a joint meeting with the county board and the planning commission last fall. So as a department, we looked through what we heard at the meeting. We looked through various other counties and their ordinances, met with the planning commission a couple of times during their regularly scheduled meeting to talk about what these changes would look like. So we are looking at asking the board to schedule a public hearing for Tuesday, May 8th. And typically, I know you don't like to discuss these when you set the hearing, but I just want to highlight a couple of things, what will be included and what won't be included in the draft ordinance changes that will go out. The recommendation from the planning commission, as you'll see in the changes written, would that, would be that sand blankets that exceed the dimensional standard, so width, length, et cetera, would become a variance, and they would no longer be heard as a CUP. They would tweak the rock riprap standards to be consistent with the DNR model ordinance. We found that our ordinance varies slightly from the DNR standard, which we need to align with. They did also recommend keeping the licensed shoreline contractor requirement. And I think for a couple of different reasons, that mainly the benefits outweigh the negatives. And the negatives were more administrative on our side by chasing down unlicensed contractors and trying to get them to pay. So we did talk about that. And also, I would, I would like to add that the contractors that we heard from at the shoreline training this year do believe that there's a benefit to be on the list and support keeping the training requirement and the licensing requirement. So what you will see is the sand blanket rock riprap changes. What you won't see is the licensed contractor elimination of that program. The other part that I would like to highlight is on page 254, and it's on line 18. And this is basically a change that Commissioner Mergan has talked to me about for a while. And I said we would bring it up next time we do ordinance changes, so that's why it's being brought up now. This relates to the permitting requirement for structures that are 150 square feet or less. Currently, outside of shoreline in Stearns County, you do not need a permit for 150-square-foot building. In shoreline, you do. So the proposal as written would be to keep, basically eliminate the permit requirement in shoreline for that size of a structure. They would still need to meet setbacks and performance standards, but not need a permit. So the other changes are primarily just clarifying. I'm not going to go through them with you today. There's really no change to current administration of the proposed changes, other than what I've just added. So with that, we would look forward to the board to authorize setting a public hearing for May 8th, and we will notify cities, townships, have the changes on our website, and answer any questions that you have at this time.
Move approval of the recommended action.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, signify with aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are up to item H, issued by commissioners. Commissioner Merrick?
I have something for Environmental Services before we go on. On setting the public hearing, as was just described, I would like us to take a look at between the board, the planning commission, Environmental Services. When we have the major alteration in Painesville, I forget the name of the individual, seems to me that we, there would be value in getting input from Stearns County Soil and Water if it is, if there's an erosion or a drainage problem. If it's aesthetics, I don't think we need that. But if it's drainage and erosion, then I'd like for Environmental Services to check with Stearns County Soil and Water to see if they'd be open to that. I think that would be valuable information when we're looking at those types of things. Once again, drainage and erosion, not aesthetics. The other thing I have is on the Studer, that was not on Studer himself, but both Commissioner Persky and I have had numerous calls, as our highway engineer has, and it's not related to that, but 322nd Street, which runs from County Road 4, and I'm not sure what the other road is in St. Joseph, but 322nd Street is in very poor condition, and there's three jurisdictions that are involved in there. I believe it's St. Wendell, St. Joseph, and the city of St. Cloud. And it's hard to get folks together, and that road is increasing, is getting increased traffic. The city of St. Cloud has authorized, oh, there's a development going along, right along 322nd Street, and C Councilmember Huntis from the city is here in Hill. I'm pretty sure he knows where that property is. So with that increased traffic, we need to take a look at that. But that ties into the overall look at what's happening in St. Wendell and St. Joseph Township. And I'm wondering if, Shelley, if you can expound on that a little bit.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Merrick, I think it's important that we talk about all the types of development that are happening, and we need to talk about the effects of that development, and that's why we need to have that comprehensive plan discussion. Transportation, we may not have a full transportation review, but I certainly think there are specific corridors that have a lot of development impact, and we need to talk about those. We have, obviously, Leesok, St. Joe Township, St. Wendell Townships have a lot of activity occurring. And I think that'll be imperative that we have those discussions. We need to talk to the cities and the townships and figure out what do we want to do with those areas. We need to have a lot of dialogue around that type of development. So I think our comprehensive planning process will be important to bring those varying parties together and see if we can come up with one plan in one direction that we can all feel comfortable with.
The reason for, the reason that I brought it up is just to heighten the awareness of these issues as you've discussed, so. Thank you.
Anything else, Commissioner?
And just to follow up on that, too, is that, that's the street where the city of St. Cloud lowered the speed limit to 30?
I don't know. Did they?
I'm not sure, but we, we've had complaints about speed and traffic.
There's a portion of that road that's in pretty good condition, but there's a portion of that road that's very, very bad, and it's very narrow.
Yeah.
And there's also issues on the western end of my directions are right with, with turning movements there, and I've talked to our county engineer about that as well, so. And I just wanted to heighten the awareness of that.
Okay, Commissioner, do you have anything?
Issues by commissioners? Sure. Oh, yeah, we have a few. And I have a question, and I don't need answers right now, but I guess this is more for Randy than anybody, but we have a number of applications for wine and beer that, that are not new. They're renewed every year, and we also have gambling licenses, and they're just so routine. And my question, and I'd like to have an answer at a future meeting, if those can be done administratively or if they all have to come to the board? I don't think that there's, you know, if there's been a violation, that's one thing. But if there's no violations, I'm wondering if that couldn't be handled administratively. And then I had two other things for you, Randy. One is, or both are on the fee schedule. One is the surveyor. I'd like us to take a look at the pros and cons, and if, and I know that if the, if the, we want people to use the web system, use electronics, but, but we need to balance that out. We don't want them coming into the office because that takes staff time, but take a look at that. And also on the tax.
What are you talking about?
Well, it was just brought up.
Yeah.
What is your question?
Yeah, what specifically are you talking about?
Look at, I'm asking Randy to look at the fee schedule as to whether or not there should be charges for somebody using the system.
Okay, I missed the point. Sorry.
And also on the fee schedule, the tax forfeiture that you talked about, the recapture, can I just take a look at that as well and bring back some recommendations?
Yep.
So those two fee schedule items and the renewals on liquor and gambling. Thank you.
Commissioner Persky, anything?
I just want to concur with Duane about 322. You know, the township's out there, just like Town Line Road, you know, have very limited resources. And those roads are both used by, you know, so many motorists coming and going, especially to work and to school. So, yeah, if we can somehow, you know, find a way to, you know, get the necessary improvements on those, that would be a good thing. Also, I want to say that, again, with today's action, with the planning commission's recommendations, again, the number of hours they're putting in is tremendous, and they, all of those members take that quite serious and appreciate the appointments that you folks make, because those things are pretty well thought out. And to Lee's credit also, yeah, sometimes we have that, those dissenting votes, and those dissenting votes do help us ferret out the details more so, so. And then one last thing, I'm going fishing tonight. But the point I want to make is that people need to be careful this time of year. And I will be careful, because I hate seeing those types of things in the paper, that we lose people because they're not being smart about going after fish, so be careful on the itis.
Mr. Natch?
The only thing I have is tonight at 6 o'clock, the Norfolk Watershed is having their one watershed, one plan review, which is, I think, just an open meeting for anybody that would care to attend to review their plan.
Mr. Landswire?
Last week was an open house for Pathways for Youth. That's the group that Kiwanis, or the effort that Kiwanis put together for homeless youth between 16 and 23. And so that was at 4 o'clock in the afternoon. Well, I had like Great River Regional Library board at 6:00. And first of all, I really had screwed up what Pathways for Youth was. I thought that was a residential facility. Actually, it's a central place for referral for males between 16 and 23. Well, they've got, Stearns County's got a social worker there, and there's also, I think Catholic Charities does, too. But anyway, they do referrals there. Well, we also have had challenges at the library with people that hang out there that cause problems. They tend to be males between 16 and 23. And one of the challenges the library staff has is removing those folks. And part of the pushback that they get is, well, I've got nowhere else to go. Well, Pathways for Youth is a place for them to go, if indeed they really are looking for assistance to their particular dilemma. So sometimes timing is everything. I would have never made that connection, even though I'm involved in this stuff on a fairly regular basis. So I left Pathways for Youth with a fistful of brochures unfolded that look like this. But now, when the library staff has an encounter like that, they can hand them a brochure, and the library and Pathways for Youth, which is on Cooper Avenue, the old Anderson Trucking Facility, it's walking distance, so, yeah, happy accident.
Thank you. Randy, did you have anything?
No.
Mike?
No.
Okay, seeing nothing further, this meeting is adjourned.